Okay, welcome everyone to another evening spent with the Roxbury zoning commission. You lucky people. It's seven oh one. On Thursday night, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, and it's time to call. Our public hearing to order and seat our members. Members tonight are contested. Elaine's not here. Candy? Jim? Or me? All right. So. So. Forgetful. Um. And alternate members tonight. Cheryl is the Lone Ranger.
And no.
And Ellen as well.
Oh, Ellen. Hey, Ellen. How you doing?
I think he's on mute.
Uh, so, uh. Since Elaine is not here. Cheryl. Step up.
Yes, I will.
You forget a member. Congratulations. All right, so. We've opened the public hearing and called the members to order or seated members and. Get on with this, the purpose of our public hearing is. I'm just gonna read what's on our agenda, proposed amendments to the Roxbury zoning regulations, section one, three, purpose. And this. This is a state mandated, is that right, Gil, state mandated, right? This, uh, public, the public act.
Uh, many of the changes that are part of the revision. Are now mandated by the state statute, there are also provisions in that state statute and say you may not. Have certain provisions in your regulations and there's other provisions that are may. So, uh, this is a revision to carry out and comport with the, with the. The zoning enabling act that was revised in two thousand twenty-one effective two thousand twenty-two.
So it's, uh, it's. It's, uh. Nothing substantial that's changed and, uh, it's. It's been created to make consistent. Uh, the state zoning statutes eight dash two and consistent with our town P O C D.
That's true.
Uh, and I might interject here for a moment. Uh. In addition to our seated members, uh, Gil McTaggart, our town attorney, has graciously stopped by. To answer, clarify any questions from the public or from members of the board. So we'll get on with the, the reason we stated that, so we'll get into the legal notices. Uh. Legal notices to, uh, voices, two of them are attached and, uh, you have them in front of you. Read them. Read just one of them.
Yep, so this is, uh. Voices, uh, Roxbury zoning commission, legal notice, public hearing, April twenty-one, twenty twenty-three. It was, uh, published in Voices, April twenty-sixth and May fifth. The Roxbury zoning commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M. in person. At the Roxbury Town Hall, twenty-nine North Street, Roxbury, Connecticut, and virtually via Zoom and teleconference, a hybrid meeting. The purpose of the hearing is to re-solicit public comment on proposed amendments to the Roxbury zoning regulations regarding. Section one point three, purpose. The proposed amendments to the Roxbury zoning regulations would rescind sections one point three point one through one point three. Point fifteen and substitute new sections. One point three point one through one point three point twenty-seven of the regulations. The full text of the proposed amendments can be viewed on the town of Roxbury website. And are available in the Roxbury Town Clerk's Office and Land Use Office during normal business hours. Because a prior hearing on these same proposed amendments was mistakenly held on the day of Lincoln's birthday observed. A legal state holiday, the public hearing for these proposed amendments will be re-held on the above hearing date. And the zoning commission will take such actions as necessary to vacate its prior action on the same proposed amendments. And to take action anew after the closing of this noticed and reconducted public hearing. At this hearing, interested persons may be present and heard and written communications will be accepted from the persons attending. In person, if attendance is virtual, written communications must be submitted by noon on May ninth, two thousand twenty-three, in order that they can be posted. William Horgan, Chair of Zoning. And then the access. The documents are there and then, uh, I'll read the posted. When it posted on the website.
No, do we need to read it, Gil?
Hi, go ahead and read it.
Should I read it? Sure, okay. So posted on the zoning website page five, uh, May second, two thousand twenty-three. Please note, currently, the zoning commission is undertaking changes to the zoning regulations primarily to align them with recent amendments. To the Connecticut zoning enabling act, section eight dash two, which sets out the scope of municipal zoning powers and regulation. This is not a comprehensive rewrite, but will provide for additions, corrections, and clarifications. That take into consideration both changes in state law and the Roxbury plan of conservation and development. The first of these proposed revisions for public consideration are to section one point three, purpose. Full text of these amendments is available at, on the town of Roxbury website. And then there's the address for it. And in the Roxbury Town Clerk's Office and Land Use Office during normal business hours. A public hearing regarding these changes will be held on May eleventh, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M. It may be attended in person at the Roxbury Town Hall, virtually via Zoom or by teleconference. Instructions on how to attend are in the legal notices posted at this website and published in Voices newspaper. April twenty-sixth and May fifth, two thousand twenty-three. This hearing will be a complete rerun of a public hearing for the same section one point three amendments noticed for and held. On February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, an observed state holiday, Abraham, like this birthday observed. In case you missed that hearing, the May eleven hearing will provide a new opportunity to provide comment on section one point three, proposed amendments. Once this reconducted hearing is closed, the zoning commission will deliberate and vote anew on the proposed amendments. That decision will supersede his prime, uh, prior vote.
Okay, next is the Roxbury Town Clerk, that's just posted on the, uh, wall, is that correct? That, uh, Karen, the.
Can you ask people not to unmute themselves at this point?
Until public comment.
Until public comment.
And what about public?
Ask, ask them to unmute, not to unmute themselves until we have the public comment.
Okay. So unmute them?
No, no.
Not to.
To mute them, they are muted or they're not?
Stay muted. To stay muted, yeah, until the public comment.
All right, Joe and Wayne, uh, and, uh. Two of you, uh, can you stay muted until we get to public comment? I guess they are. All right, town clerk, uh, notice had been posted on, on the bulletin board. Public registry notices, they were mailed directly to the ones, people who've signed up.
Uh, they go out by email.
Email to those who have signed up.
Signed on, yes.
For a three-year period?
Yes.
Okay. And that's been done.
It's been done.
Referrals, referrals to the Roxbury planning commission in their response, notice to the Northwest Hills Council of Governments in response. Western Connecticut Council of Governments in response, and the North of Valley Council of Governments in response. All, all four of them had no issue with any, there was no issue with, from any of the councils.
The planning commission, uh, report should be read into the record.
All right.
We missed that, yes, right before the Northwest Hills fell.
Ken, do I read that?
We skipped over it.
Yeah. Um, so this is to William Horgan from Dieter Daily, subject zoning referral regarding proposed amendments to section three point one of the Roxbury zoning regulations. Date, January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. At a regular meeting of the Roxbury Planning Commission held January twelve, two thousand twenty-three, the commission reviewed a referral from the Roxbury zoning commission of proposed. Amendments to the Roxbury zoning regulations, the commission reviewed proposed text amendments to section three point one, purpose. Of the zoning regulations and greet their compatible with the town's plan of conservation and development. Thank you for referring proposed amendments to zoning. Regulations for the planning commission's review and comment, Dieter Daily.
One point three.
Oh, what did I say?
Well, it's written.
Oh, yes, right, it is. Just reading as I said. It is a typo in their letter and it is, thank you very much, one. Point three. Thank you.
All right. Uh, so that leads us next to. Public comment.
Do you wanna?
Would you like me to, to say a few things about this, um, and then the public can comment?
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I think, uh, what's important is that, uh, in Connecticut and elsewhere. Uh, the law is that the zoning commissions have the power that's delegated to them by the state statute. All of the powers that you have, you have only the powers that are delegated by the state statutes. And that section is eight dash two, it's a zoning enabling act. For many, many years, that act had some, a few minor amendments to it, but no major overhaul. Uh, in two thousand twenty-one, there was a major, major changes to the statute. And those changes required that. The zoning regulations have a certain purposes. Some of those purposes were mandatory, you must provide for certain things. Some of them were also mandatory in that you shall not provide for certain things and there were changes. And then there's a whole section that were may, zoning regulations may do these things. The way that the zoning regulations were set up in Roxbury forever, I guess, as far as I know. Um, were that they took the, um, the powers from section eight dash two in, in the, in the prior statute. And listed those at the beginning of your regulations. Towns do it all different ways. But in the end, they have to provide these provisions that are set forth in the statute and, and it, it does determine the scope. Of what can be in the zoning regulations. And the, the authority is pretty broad, it's, it's, it's pretty broad authority, but there are some limits and now there's. Incentives and programs and, um, that are, that you have to provide for, so. Our regulations, your regulations in Roxbury hadn't been updated for a long time. So we kept the same format, uh, when we looked at that and decided what, what I did, what I thought we could recommend to the, to the commission. To keep the same format, but just update it to comply with the state statute. So we didn't try to say, throw out the paper with, with water and, and start all over, we, we started with what you had. Make corrections where corrections were necessary, added where additions were necessary. And that's a result of what you're looking at. So even though it looks like we're getting rid of the section and applying a new section, if you, if you, if you looked at those. Uh, provisions together, you would see that words, some words are changed. Uh, in various, uh, provisions that were part of the purposes and there are definitely new purposes added. That needed to be added to comply with the statute. So the, the statute, um, eight dash two. Did, um, and I'm, I'm just gonna give you a really quick idea of what, what that means. So that section says zoning regulations adopted shall. Shall is mandatory under our state statutes. They, they shall be made in accordance with the comprehensive plan and they must be made in consideration of the plan of conservation and development. Your, your planet conservation development, two thousand twenty, planet conservation development. For Roxbury is very consistent with these purposes because a lot of those purposes are looking at what the sense of place is in Roxbury. Looking at the rural, what, what you, what people like and care about this, this community. And that the zoning rigs that are being proposed. Keep that definition there. There might be some areas where you may have to expand. This commission, when it, looking at its regulations, may have to do some expansion of some of the. Um, of some of the, the uses and requirements in order to carry it out, but basically there is a good consistency. With the plan of conservation and development and when you, when this commission acts on these, uh, regulations tonight. Or if you don't do it tonight, whenever you decide to act, act on them, when you act on those regulations. One of the reasons for approving those is that you have considered the planet conservation and development and there is consistency. So that's, that's part of the statute that, that that consistency is there. Um, kind of conservation and development is an advisory document. You could, you could disagree with some provision, this commission could disagree with some of those provisions. Be consistent with others. What you have to do is consider it. So that, that's, that's the rule. Um, then it says that it's designed to lessen congestion in the street, to secure safety and. From fire and panic, promote public, um, public health and welfare, adequate light and air. Protect historic tribal, cultural, environmental resources. Those words are new. Those words were new, so those words to protect those resources are in now in your new reg, your reg, because it's part of the shall. Um, consider the impact of the permitted land uses on contiguous municipalities in the planning region. There's always been when I, when I, as you know, when a zoning regulation is proposed, it goes out to the, um, to COG, to your council of governments. And one of those reasons to do that, and that happened here with the set of regulations, is to see if there's a comment from the region. So that, that was done and you got a report back saying that there was really nothing that they thought, uh, needed, uh, needed to be addressed. Um, address significant disparities in housing needs and access to educational, occupational, and other opportunities. That is new. That's a, that, that provision is part of making sure that zoning regulations. Even if they don't explicitly discriminate, that they don't implicitly somehow discriminate against, um. Against people based on occupation, education. Um, and, and other opportunities. Um. Promote efficient review of proposals and applications. This is, um, this is a great new mandatory provision of the state statute. Because what it's saying is if you have some way that you can make it more seamless to do applications, uh, you, that, that's a good idea to do that. Uh, a lot of times this happens with. Where you might have certain kinds of things that you think should, certain kinds of uses you think should be special permit uses which require public hearings. Others that maybe could be expedited through the zoning process for zoning permits. Or even just working with the wetlands commission to make sure that there's consistency, that applications go into wetlands first. They need to get there because if there's changes. Then you, you're looking at an application that'll be changed because of the wetlands review. It's better to get that started, so there's some good, there's, some of that is just good process and that's what this is saying. Uh. They should be drafted with reasonable consideration of physical site characteristics. And its peculiar suitability for particular uses with a view to encouraging appropriate use of land throughout the municipality. The state statute now says that we can't. Use the word character in our regulations without defining what that is based on physical. After news of the town. So we can't just have a fuzzy word, a vague word that says that. Your use that you come in and bring to the town that you're asking us to prove has to be in the character of the town, we have to say what that is. And that, that's part of what this, this commission is already, um, addressed and has done and that's part of the purposes here. Um, housing opportunities provide for development of housing opportunities, including opportunities for multi-family dwellings. Consistent with soil types, terrain, infrastructure, infrastructure for all the residents and municipality. Um, which, where it's located and designated, planning area for, by the, um, by the office of planning, uh, for the state. So these things, uh. The adjustments were made, sometimes it was just a few words, a few changes in, in the words that were there. So for instance, in the proposed regulation. Uh. We started with the reasonable consideration for physical site characteristics that we talked about. And, uh, it's peculiar suitability for particular uses. So you just heard me say that you shall, the statute saying you shall, you have it right up, at the, at the outset. Um, the lesson congestion in the streets, that was there already, promoting health, safety and welfare was there already. We had the words of the community, we agreed to just go with the words of the statute, they were simple, um, and shorter. Um, provide adequate light and air. And then we added to protect, we used to, you used to say to prevent overcrowding of land. And the statute changed to say we really can't say it that way anymore. Uh, what we do is we protect the state's, um, historic tribal, cultural. Um, and environmental resources, we added that. And we have other provisions that talk about, just about lessening congestion in the street. Uh, part of that is because of, um, some of the groups that are desegregate Connecticut and some other groups that are really interested in fair housing throughout the state. And they worried that having something that says you're protecting overcrowding would mean that. You aren't allowing enough opportunities in your community for different types of housing. So those words are out of the statute, they were there before, so those are gone. Um, and then we had, um. We had to conserve the value of buildings. And that's not there, but to regulate the percentage of the area of land is something you can do, so you can talk about coverage ratios. Um, how, how, how much, and this, this matters. Because of drainage and soils and protection, um, that happens with development. So you can look at the amount of coverage on a piece of land and, um, make regulations about that. Um, you could, you always could regulate and limit the height. But now you can limit the height, the number of stories, the size of the buildings are something that can, that can happen. So that actually is a broader scope and probably a better, a better, um, a better scope for the regulations. Uh, you had and you still have the protection of historic resources. Including homes, monuments, schools, barns, and other structures, that's been a, a, a huge focus in Roxbury. And it's there and it's still there and it's also part of the new statute. Um, then there's an energy component. So, uh, one of the new sections is that there will be promote energy efficient patterns of development. The words are, are broader than they were because there's more that we know about energy type development than years ago in these regulations, so you'll see. And I, at that point, I'm gonna ask you to put the word of in, so. Thirteen point, one point three point fourteen will read to promote energy efficient patterns of development. The use of distributed generation of, of freestanding or solar wind and other renewable forms of energy and energy conservation. Uh, and I, I should have said at one point three nine. It says that you will regulate the density of population and the location and use of building structures and land for trade, industry. Residents or other purposes. And then there was a, um, a proposed provision that referenced a state statute for, uh, water dependent uses. But when you look up that, even though that's part of the new statute, eight dash two, when you look that up, it's really only about water dependent uses that are on the coastline. Their coastal water, so they're not inland water. So, uh, when you, when you act on this, I would like you to strike. That, that last, uh, part of that provision that says including water dependent uses defined in Connecticut general statutes twenty-two, eight dash ninety-three. So that'll get. Uh, that'll get stricken, um, it should be stricken. Um, and then.
The whole, the whole.
No, just the end, just the last part of it, so the first part says to regulate the density of population and locations. And use of building structures and land for trade, industry, residence, or other purposes, period. And we'll, we'll take out the including part. It doesn't include. It, it, it sounds good, water dependent uses, but as it, it turns out that that particular statute, twenty-two A, is only about coastal. Water dependent, like marinas and those kind of things that, uh, we don't have here in Roxbury. And then there were, um, there were, uh, a, a number of additions that were made. To the Roxbury regulations to make them comply with the requirements and need, some of these are absolutely requirements, they're part of the shall. Uh, to consider the impact of permitted land uses on contiguous municipalities, we've talked about. To address significant disparities in housing needs and access to educational, occupational, those, those new se, that is a new section that we, we've talked about that was added. To provide for the development of housing opportunities. Uh, that whole section on housing opportunities is a, is a requirement. It used to, it used to be more of an incentive and, and it, it said that you would promote it. The word is now to provide. So statute changed the words to promote those kinds of opportunities to provide for. So when you go through the rest of your regulations and you do some of this already, but when you go through the rest of your regulations, you shall provide for this. Um. When we talked about housing choice, to allow for development of housing which will meet housing needs, you have, um. Uh, you have an affordable housing plan. Affordable housing plan is, you know, is part and parcel to your planet conservation and development for Roxbury. And as you go through your regulations, you will take that into consideration because you, that's part of the planet conservation and development. And that also is carried out by this new section one point three twenty that you proposed. Um. The, and then I like, um, one point three point two point one for Roxbury because agriculture matters here. And we have a provision that says provide reasonable consideration for the impact on agriculture. Agriculture is defined as section one point one of the general statutes. And that's what the statute says, it's agriculture as defined in that statute. If you, uh, one point one of the general statutes is the broadest definition of agriculture you can imagine. Is every aspect that you can think of that's agr, that it qualifies as agriculture. So it's a very broad allowance and focus to say that, uh, Roxbury will do this and our state statute says you shall do this. Um, to affirmatively further, further the Fair Housing Act. Apparently, this is a complicated, uh, Fair Housing Act is a. Uh, and I thought I should put on the record a little bit about it. Um, but the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing, to, to put it very, very simply. Um, it does apply to municipalities. And it does apply to zoning regulations. So if you had zoning regulations which had the, uh, effect of discriminating in housing in some way. Um, that would be something that would need to be addressed and the state statute is specifically referencing the Fair Housing Act. So, uh, a lot of the, the affordable housing. Uh. Uh, groups that are out, that are working around the state, trying to get, uh, towns to think more about this. They're talking a lot about the Fair Housing Act. So it, it is, it is important, but it applies to most kinds of housing. Uh, owner occupied multi-family housing with four or fewer, fewer units is, is exempted. Um. Certain single family houses rentals can't, you can't treat rental differently than sales. Uh, so the, the Fair Housing Act is definitely to provide a, um, a fair basis for housing, uh, within the town. Uh. Your accessory apartment, uh, regulations that you have already adopted in Roxbury. Also carry out provisions of the, of the new zoning law. So you've done some of this already by, by addressing, um, accessory, accessory units. Uh, let me see if I can go on, okay, to the extent of, uh. And has to be consistent with soil types, terrain, infrastructure, capacity. Um. And the planet conservation development for the community provide for cluster development, you do have a cluster, a cluster type development already. Uh, the state statute says it's as defined in eight dash eighteen. Uh, your cluster development is consistent with eight dash eighteen definition of cluster development, which is. Uh, you know, the basic thing is instead of having, um, a, um, a development which is divided up into little squares. You can put all the houses in one area and have conservation areas. And, uh, there's a conservation subdivision right now, it's part of your, uh, zoning regulations. Uh, and it goes to both planning, planning commission looks at that as well as the zoning, uh, zoning commission. To reasonably consider protection of existing and potential public surface and ground and drinking water supplies. Uh, most applications today, especially, special permit applications, uh, do look at. Um, water, I, water resources, uh, wetlands looks at resources, but this is even broader than that. This is looking at if there's a well field that it's protected, so, uh, that's another mandatory provision. Uh, to regulate height, size, location, business, and illumination of advertising signs and billboards. We've had, uh, United States Supreme Court decisions on signs that have, uh, pretty much set. All sign regulations up on their ear, so it was nice that the statute now, that the new statute dealt with this and told us that we can do this much here. We have zoning enabling act that says this, which is, which is great. And then we've talked about the efficient review, so the regulations, um, uh, the regulations are. Primarily not so different than they were before. Uh, they've been fine tuned to meet the state statute and in, in my legal opinion, they do that. I would say, I will tell you that there's a provision that says that, um, that we're looking for some kind of, uh, consideration of the state plan of conservation and development. I pulled it down because it's been under, under draft and review, there is one. And it's constantly being redrafted and has, uh, zoning areas and I looked at all the different sections that dealt with municipalities for that. And, uh, it's an advisory. And, uh, it's an advisory, it's a completely advisory document. It, um, there are when grants, when towns get grants for programs, a lot of times they're looking to see whether what Roxbury does is consistent with it. The problem with it is it's very urban centric. And it's looking at transport areas, um, development that's within a half a mile of a tra, a major transportation facility or use. It's very difficult for some of the more rural towns to sort of fit into that, into that mold. So, uh, it is out there, uh, and it's, it, if you, if you need some, um, something to read before you go to bed, it's there, but, uh, yeah, but it's, it's, uh, there's really not a lot that really impacts, that impacts Roxbury, uh, that much, uh, on that basis. And I think, um, see if I, I think that's pretty, that's pretty much it. So, um, I think the, what, what will happen is once these purposes are adopted, the commission can go to work, using those purposes can go to work on the other sections of the regulations to bring them in line. So this sets out the skeleton and the scope of what this town can do in its own rigs.
Great. Thank you. That was very, very helpful. So.
It was comforting, actually. All right. So, uh, that leads us now to public comment. There's no one here in the room. Does anyone have any public comment of relative to our public hearing for purpose?
Could be questions from us too. So. Anyone else has questions?
Joe.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. And first, thank you for rescheduling the meeting and, um, providing an opportunity for the public to, uh, participate in this. I'm sure that many of you on the commission have been for many months reviewing all of this. I haven't, um, I know many, uh, members of the public have not, so it's, it's fairly new to us, um, these changes. Um, and I appreciate, um, attorney Gail McTaggart attending tonight and opining on, um, all of the revisions that are set forth. I, I'm still kind of having a hard time wrapping my head around some of them. I, um, been trying to spend whatever available free time I have to understand them. Um, it's been difficult. I have consulted, um, three different land use attorneys to try to understand what is mandatory and what's not. And again, thank you, Gail, for spelling a lot of this out. I reviewed each individual one, um, in particular twenty-two, A, dash ninety-three and, and so on and for, so forth down the list. And, and I won't go through them all because I want to keep my comments short. I did not notice the shall muster may in any of them. Um, so I'm hoping that maybe Gail can opine on where I can find the shall or the must. Um, I'm sure it's an easy find.
It's, it's found in section eight, dash two. Of the general, in general statutes, it's broken down, it has an introduction section of the statute, and then it starts with the zoning regulation shall. And then it has the zoning regulations may, and then it says the regulations shall not.
Okay. So, uh, attorney McTaggart, are all of the changes being made tonight mandatory?
No, there are regulations that are may.
Okay.
And, uh, we, uh, Roxbury has retained some of those regulations that are within their scope of their authority. For instance, there is a, a real emphasis in, in Roxbury on preservation of historic factors. There's a general provision that the regulations may provide for the preservation of historic factors. And then there's now a mandatory provision about some of those, um, though that, some of those historic type things. But Roxbury has a broader and probably, um, better, a better purpose for the town. It's completely within the powers that are granted to it. So there are some, there are some differences. It's not verbatim.
Okay. So, so they're not, they're not all mandatory. Okay. So when I began my quest to understand some of this stuff, I had reached out to some members of the committee. And I was told that they were all mandatory. I, it's obvious that the ones that don't have state statues embedded in them obviously aren't. But that's really what I've been trying to narrow down. I can't elaborate on whether or not I'm for them or against them at this point because I haven't gotten that far. I'm just merely trying to figure out which ones are mandatory and what the, um, advantages or disadvantages of adopting these may be. And so some of those questions, Gail, you've answered tonight. And I think, you know, moving forward, because this is only chapter one of many, many chapters of the zoning code, that it appears as though the zoning commission is going to change. Uh, moving forward, maybe it would be in everybody's best interest to, before the public hearing, to, on the, um, the adoption portion, um, below the redaction, spell out which ones are mandatory and which ones aren't. I mean, I'm here tonight to tell you that, um, I, I, I still am trying to wrap my head around which ones aren't, which ones are. There, you know, I have a lot of questions that I don't think we have a lot of time to answer tonight and I don't want to take up a lot of your time. So what I would ask the commission is for an opportunity to present those questions to you. Um, it doesn't seem to me like this is something that has to be rushed, although I know you all have been working on this, um, for some time, I'm sure. But it is new for the public. And maybe, um, if you would so oblige us to table it for a month so that based upon what all of the information that Gail has presented tonight, which a lot of it is new. Um, I think it's honest, you know, uh, fair to say that we didn't know some of those things that we can have an opportunity to review that and, and then come back to you. Um, between now and, and the following, you know, the, the, the follow-up meeting with any questions and emails. Um, so we could all understand that, uh, what, what is happening, right? Cause like I said, it's only chapter one of many, of many chapters that are going to be changed. And, you know, next to the budget zoning is the, you know, one of the, one of the most, if not the most important part of our, uh, local municipality. So it, it means a lot to, uh, to some of us. And quite frankly, you know, I've talked to a lot of residents in the town and it, and it's, and it's a scary thing, right? Because we all love the town that we live in and we want to make sure that it's cared for properly. And, um, there isn't a lot of change that we're, um, that we're against. We want to keep that role, um, character. And, um, so that's my public participation. I appreciate an opportunity to weigh in a little bit here. And Gail, thanks again for opining on the, uh, on the statutes.
You're welcome. I, I would respond to one of the things you said. The prohibitive provisions just aren't in the regs. You won't find something that says this is prohibited. The, the, the regulations include mandatory provisions and the may provisions. What's prohibited cannot be in the regs, so it is not there. So you won't find it.
Okay. So, so then, uh, and I don't want to continue this much more than we have to, but twenty-two, A, dash ninety-three. Sixteen, A, dash four, A. Um, that one is, uh, office of policy and management duties and powers. All, all of these, all of these state statutes, Gail, are, are mandatory.
No, the, the state statutes are, yes, those state statutes that are in these regs are listed in the sec, in the, in the provision of the state statute that says you will provide a regulation that's consistent with this other state law. The only one at one point, three, nine that's there, we are ticking out, which is twenty-two, A, dash ninety-three. You got to cross it out. Can't read it. Um, because, uh, that would only apply to towns that are down along the coastline. It is there, it is, it is mandatory for those towns along the coastline. But it, that part of that provision is not mandatory for an inland.
Attorney McTaggart, you also mentioned sixteen, eight, dash twenty-six. I think the state plan of conservation and development and that it doesn't really fit with. So is that, has that been omitted or is that still in?
No, it's referenced here.
Oh, it is. Okay. So we're gonna.
Now the references are here and the, the, um, the, as I said, the, the state statute requires consistency with the fair housing act. So that's in our, that's in our, it's part of our regulation. Uh, it requires that we, uh, can have considerations for soil conservation. That's twenty-two, A, dash three, twenty-nine, which we do. And, uh, that is, uh, that's referenced and it is accurate. It's there and it's, uh, it's not, that's not a new statute that's been around for a while. Um, the other sections, we talked about coastal management. So all of the statutes that are listed there are statutes that are referenced in the zoning enabling act where it cross references another statute and says the, the commission will have a, have authority to do, will, will provide for these kinds of measures such as soil erosion, sedimentation control, which is very important. And we have a statute about soil erosion and sedimentation control. And so instead of putting all those provisions in, it just cross references that statute.
And, and attorney McTaggart, um, it, the, the state requires us to have this particular verbiage, um, or, um, uh, I guess account for it. It, does it necessarily mean that we have to adopt the, the exact state statute? Or as long as we have something that we put together that meets the, the, the bill, the bill, you know?
We could, we could revise the words to make them mean the same thing. I'm not sure what that, what that exercise would be worth. Because when it gets, it can let you finish, when it gets interpreted, it's going to be interpreted based on the state statutory words. So, and some towns do, they rewrite them. They try to figure out other ways to say those, they change the words. Roxbury had historically not done that, had used the words from the state statute and many other towns do the same thing. And, uh, so, uh, my, my recommendation and the commission, I guess, has decided to do that. They've worked on this, uh, was to stay as close to the state statute as possible because it's, there's some protection in that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, Joe. Uh, thank you for your input and your comments.
Thank you.
Any other comments? The board? Wayne, do you have any comments?
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Just, uh, just to reiterate what Joe said, uh, not to put this on the fast lane, I, I, I'm not saying you have, but this is significant. Um, and these changes will impact the town hugely or can. And to really think this through and to adopt these, these measures carefully, you know, because I've read, um, what Joe mentioned, I've, I've read it three times and there's not too many shells or must that apply to this that I've read. Um, and yes, I'm not an attorney, but I, I didn't read that all these were mandatory myself. And I know the word was they are mandatory. So maybe an approach to spell out exactly where, um, each one of these measures is mandatory would be really helpful and prevent a lot of confusion and mistrust. So, um, just take a slow approach to this because the, uh, sorry, but the character of this town can be changed forever. And that's all I have.
All right, Wayne, thank you for your comments.
Yeah, I have a, I have a comment. Um, so I think, I think in ultimately, it's important that the items that are shells have to be in there. And those we don't have any say in. But ultimately what we've decided to put in the commission feels is in the best interest of Roxbury. And ultimately that's, I think, the deciding factor here with these items of purpose. Is that fair to say? So, Gail, when I, when I say that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, you know, shells have to go in to provide, I believe that's a shell, isn't that correct?
That's true.
Yeah. So shall is not always the word that's used. Um, and she's already explained that, which I think's been very clear. The other thing I just want to point out, and I think we can all agree, I think, I don't know how, when we started working on this, but it's been a long time. The thing to remember is that the public is always invited to our meetings and they're posted. And this, this has been going on for well over a year. So, you know, I think, um, I, I just want to make that comment that this has not been anything that's been hidden. It's been out in the public, it has been posted, has been conversations that we've been having about this for a very, very long time. So, um, I just wanted to make that.
We haven't treated it like that.
No, we have not.
Any other comments? No other comments? Well, if there are no other comments, we can, uh, close the meeting so I can take a moment.
Okay.
Close the public hearing.
Uh, I'm, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Candy, I second. The motion to close public hearing.
All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Public hearing is closed. Minutes to rest if we'd like. All right. That leads us to the next order of business in our evening, meeting. And that's the, uh, to open the last special meeting we're gonna have.
Well, you might schedule.
Well, there might, there might be another one. Never say never.
Hey, Brinkin should be proud of us. Uh, so, it's time to open our special meeting and seat members. It's Thursday, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, it's, uh, seven forty-eight in Roxbury. Our members present tonight are contestants, Andy, Larry. Elaine's not here. Joe Rosen, you're sitting in for, uh, Elaine, Jim Conway and myself, Phil Harvey. Uh, and the first item on the, uh, agenda for the special meeting tonight is, uh, prove the minutes. We have four different minutes to, uh, to approve tonight. So we'll start with the, uh, public hearing of April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. That meeting was, uh,
Forgot my piece of paper, but I had, like, the only thing I saw out of all of them was that it was listed Chairman Conway.
Yes.
Right. Yeah. Every single one.
I sent you an email. Yeah. It just won't let you go, Jim.
Some old habits die hard.
But then the rest of it lists, you know, Horgan, Chairman Horgan, you know, but just at the very beginning.
Temporary struct, restructuring of power.
You see it?
Help me, where is that?
The public hearing, yeah. There's not a bunch of them.
Oh, yeah.
All right. So that's.
Okay. Oh, my goodness.
Public hearing.
That was cute.
We miss you. Yeah, that's right.
Now, which is the one that had special?
I'm surprised I haven't done that before.
That was one of the, that was. Yeah, it's on page. Oh, eight, yeah, April thirteenth.
All right, that hearing was.
Are we on the public hearing first?
It was still in the public hearing.
Okay.
First public hearing.
Let's do one at a time if we possibly can. That would be helpful. Thanks.
And that's just specifically for the Murries.
It was, uh,
Tierney first.
No, Tierney went second.
Oh, he, he went second.
Yeah, Tierney went second. Yeah.
Murray went first.
Compared the two.
Right.
Yes, that was Murray.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the only thing I found on that one.
Yeah, I, I agree.
We cut that one.
Anybody else ready to make a motion?
Motion to approve the, to the public hearing for. Motion to approve the, to the public hearing for Murrays on April 13.
Candy, Larry, I approve. I second. I second the motion.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I didn't catch that, Bill. Candy, second, okay.
Sounds like you did.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, all, Candy, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, no. With that change.
With the change.
Right, as amended.
As amended, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
And that was unanimous?
Yes.
Correct. Thank you.
Second. Approval minutes is the second public hearing for Tierney, on Sunday through April 8.
Right, that also requires a change to Chairman Conway.
I see that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm consistently wrong.
Just in the same spot, that's all.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of public hearing for Tierney, April 13, 2023, as amended.
Aye, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay, that's approved.
Okay.
Karen?
Got that one.
The next approval of minutes is for a special meeting on April 13. That was a regular meeting, but it was called a special meeting. A little bit more to that.
Oh, yeah, that again has changed for the Chairman Conway, should be Chairman Corrigan.
Where is that?
Oh, yeah.
It's right on the same spot.
Same spot.
Call to order at 7:48.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so
You were very consistent.
Yeah, it was good.
That's weird.
So I have one, this is the other thing, under page two, bottom, elderly and affordable housing, administrative regulation changes. It says, Jocelyn Air pointed out that our regulations did not have affordable housing and elderly housing listed. They, it was only affordable housing that wasn't listed, elderly housing was listed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's a good catch, though.
And then above, under special events permit, I believe the last sentence should read, Chris Hagerty wondered whether the ASG event being planning should go through, or it should be planned.
Right.
Oh, right, catch.
Any other corrections? Take a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of April 13.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Wait.
Regular meeting.
As amended.
As amended.
Candy, I second.
As amended, yes.
As amended.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. All right, Karen, that was unanimous, too. Now, the next approval of minutes is for two things, a hearing and a regular meeting.
Yeah. A little hard to see that on there, but it's, there are two separate.
Yeah, the hearing and regular meeting. And that was kind of funny because a meeting took place, that was a meeting that because of Abe Lincoln,
Yeah.
we had to withdraw, what did we do?
We have redone everything.
All right.
Do we have to approve each minute, then?
Yeah, because a meeting did take place.
Yeah, I think you should approve the minutes, and then I think I put, worked with Karen to make a motion that would include the notation that's, that's, that's on your agenda.
Okay, and the notation is see below.
No, no, you can just read this.
It's, it's right where the minutes are listed, Bill.
Right where the minutes are listed.
See where minutes are hearing.
Yeah, if you keep reading past that, yeah.
Where's that, Karen, where?
Yeah, it's right here. Yeah, with notes, hearing, okay, and actions taken, yeah, with note.
Okay.
That the hearing and actions taken on that day have been subject to reconsideration.
Okay. All right, so let's get to the minutes. Those two, public hearing first. That public hearing was February 13, 2023.
No, I make a motion to approve minutes February 13, 2023.
All right, a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Minutes of the first
And will you include that note?
So so oh, that should be part of the motion. Yeah, oh, so, wait a minute, sorry.
Yeah.
So, let me do that again.
Let's do that again.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of the public hearing February 13, 2023, with note, do I read that? With note that the hearing and actions taken on this date have been subject to reconsideration. See minutes, yeah.
That's right.
Okay.
That's your motion, do I have a second on that motion? Second. All right, do we have to state that again for the second?
Yes.
You want to read that?
So, all in favor? What you do, all in favor?
All in favor.
You didn't need to vote, vote, Bill.
Aye.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We didn't have to read the note.
I already did, I just did. And so now we're gonna do the second one, do the regular meeting.
Okay, I thought you were redoing the first one.
I, I did, that's what I was doing.
All right.
And now we're gonna do the second one.
All right, second is a meeting.
It's a regular meeting.
A regular meeting.
Much longer.
All right, so I'm gonna do this again, so I'm gonna make a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of February 13, 2023, with note that the hearing and actions taken on this date have been subject to reconsideration.
I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. All right, that's unanimous, too. With the note.
Can I ask a question, subject to reconsideration? Does that mean we can change our minds on what we approved February 13?
No, the matters that were on the agenda have been reconsidered. Both the hearing you just had was a reconsidered hearing.
We approved an application.
That's the last, last month we
Yeah, and we're gonna, you're gonna
We went back to that.
Yeah, and you're, you didn't, those are done. And at this meeting tonight, one of your next items on the agenda is to vote to vacate your prior decision on the zoning regs. And then you're gonna make a new decision based on the public hearing you've had tonight.
Right, right.
Oh, yeah, we did that.
We did, and then it was up for reconsideration. Was, could we have changed?
Yeah. Because it's all new.
Right.
Yeah.
That would get you in big trouble. Big trouble.
Could, if there was
The answer is yes, we could have changed that.
Yeah, absolutely, you could, you could, you could make a different decision based on what you've heard at the public hearing.
Right.
Right.
But it wasn't a public
It wasn't a public hearing.
No, those others were not, yeah.
Right, right. Okay.
All right, on to the next item, agenda number three, zoning, reported zoning enforcement officer. He's away this evening, and he has no, I talked to him, and there's nothing he wanted me to read. Next item, agenda of the Murrays, well, his bridge special permit addition, they have withdrawn their application. So now
Do we make a motion? To vacate, is that what?
Make a motion to vacate, and I'll, I'll explain, after you make the motion, if you want to, I'll explain why we're doing that.
Okay, so do I, I can make, I'll make the motion, so I just make the motion based, I'll just read this. Okay, I make a motion to vacate action of zoning commission, zoning commission taken at the regular zoning meeting held February 13, 2023, which action was to approve text amendments to the Roxbury zoning regulations pertaining to section 1.3 purpose.
Candy, I second.
All right, all in favor?
No. Oh, wait.
Discussion.
Sorry, discussion.
So Mr. Correnta brought a Freedom of Information complaint based on the, having the hearing and the vote on February 13. Lincoln's birthday was February 12, which is a Sunday. And there is a state statutory provision that means that the observed day is always the next day, which is Monday, it is your regular meeting day. It is a pretty unusual situation, and has been very difficult for, for not only your town, but other towns. I've talked to Freedom of Information Commission, and the issue has shown up in other towns. Some banks were open, some banks were closed. Some, some towns had hours open, and some of them paid people extra or didn't. We all, I think a lot of us thought that when we went to President's Day, the reason that we all went to President's Day is so that there would be one holiday that was a nice three-day holiday, that everybody would celebrate every president's birthday, including Abraham Lincoln.
And that was the holiday list that we went by
Right.
because that was approved by the Board of Slight
Yeah, and it is the federal holiday list, and I, at first, the first, when I first heard about it, I thought, no, that's right, you can, that's not a problem. And I looked it up, it's always good to look things up. And when I looked it up, I could see that there was a good argument that it was a state holiday. It's on the administrator's calendar for the state of Connecticut, it's listed. The next one that you have, that's in the same category, is gonna be Juneteenth, which people aren't used to, but those are holidays, and we, Connecticut's only one of four states that recognizes this holiday.
Lincoln's birthday.
Lincoln's birthday, yeah, so observed, not his birthday, but the observed day of his birthday. So after looking at it, and I, I talked to both Tom Hennig at the Freedom of Information Commission, Russ Blair, who's gonna be taking over for him. We decided that it, it, this is an important thing, zoning regulations, that they be established, and that there's no issue about how they were done or when they were done. It was completely unintentional. It was noticed, I will tell you, there is one town that's contesting it, I don't know how it's gonna work out, but it is, it was, it was noticed, and we didn't have any complaint until right at the time of the, of the hearing, the hearing date. So the better, the better course was to redo this. And rather than have a contested hearing in Hartford, and also because I thought it was so important, let's give people another chance to come to the meeting, be heard, we want to make sure everybody is heard. This commission doesn't want to be on record of not providing the broadest amount of input that people can make at a hearing. So it, it made a lot of sense just to redo it. Fortunately, Mr. Correnta agreed to withdraw his complaint on the basis that we would reschedule this hearing, that we would put a notice on the, a good notice, which I thought was a really a good idea, by the way, on, on the website, that informed people what the process was, what the status was, why these regulations were being amended. So that was done. And so with this action, we need to get rid of the vote that you have before. So the best way to do that is now that you've had a hearing, you can vacate that, and then take up a new, the discussion about the regulations, and have another vote tonight on that. It does not have to be the same vote. You, you, you've had a public hearing, you can base it on what you've heard. And so it's up to, it's up to this commission.
So we vote on this vacate, we vote and create a clean slate.
That's it.
And then the next year, the item is a fresh item.
That's exactly right.
Okay. All right, it's time to have a motion and vote on vacating zoning commission.
We just have a vote, right?
Oh, we already
And a second.
So we have a motion and a second, so I will vote on vacating the zoning commission February 13, meeting, all in favor of vacating?
Aye.
Closed. All right. That's unanimous, Karen.
Thank you.
Which leads us to agenda item number six, is zoning regulation revision 1.3, purpose discussion, a possible vote on a proposed text amendments following the May 11th public hearing, which we've had, so.
Where's the, which one is the one that has the of?
Section 13.4. The same one? Oh, no, 13.14, sorry, 13.14.
I just don't have it.
Yeah, so it's 13.14.
Oh, 14.
Yeah, yeah. So there was 13.14.
I have the other one.
And the nine is
All right.
May I make a suggestion or not? Okay, my suggestion is that in your motion, when you get ready, you can have whatever discussion, but when you get ready to vote, that your motion include the reason for the change. So the rationale for the change is such things as consistency with the plan of conservation development, which the planning commission has that, and so, so indicated. And also that it's consistent with the state enabling act to make the regulations consistent with the state of the act. So I, I mean, it's up to you what your reasons are, but I think at minimum, those, those reasons are important.
Well, this is, this is an old friend we're visiting here. We've been looking over this thing for the last year.
Yeah, as long as we had a definition, which we did, yeah. Look at it, go, oh, that's okay.
Yeah, it's candy, we have discussed this over and over again, and we've read all of the, we've read the old reg, we've looked at the new changes. They're reasonable, they're clear. I think we discussed the shall, what we had to do. And keeping in mind that, you know, we want to comply with the state regs and, you know, acts. I believe that's why we, I've been for the change.
I think this is the first major overhaul since that is, there's a lot of things that have changed over the years. And there was one alteration, I think it was in one of the items, and I think it was 2013, should have put the back of the reg. But I believe the rest of it, maybe one other slight change, nothing had changed from the beginning.
There was a time when you had a zoning member that did a lot of grammatical changes.
Yes, yes.
Am I correct? I remember just
Stuart.
Yes, Stuart, yeah. I mean, it was a real project.
Yes.
It was a serious project.
Yes, yes, yeah, so it was, it was grammar.
Is this somewhat considered regionalized zoning?
You know, the state is definitely pushing
Oh, yeah.
for it.
And this, to me, seems
Some of the words that are, some of, yeah, but it's, we don't have a choice about it.
Right.
But what you do have a choice about, about is that you do have to look at your community and what you can do in your community. I mean, you can't, if you have steep slopes, wetlands, ledge, you know, if you have a lot of factors, and you're trying to put, you know, a big development sitting down on something like that, no matter what the state does, they still are saying consistent within infrastructure, I mean, consistent with terrain, those kinds of things still matter. And you have, you have a huge focus on historic preservation in this community. And that focus also bears very well for Roxbury to be able to make decisions on the kinds of things that you do. When I looked at the Affordable Housing Plan, and the idea about, you know, putting together a housing partnership, or, you know, a trust or, you know, a trust and doing some of those kind of things. Sarah Bernhardt is, Meadow is an example of something that's Roxbury centric. It does provide multifamily housing. It is consistent with this community. So there are ways, there are ways to do these things that are, that don't mean putting up ten story buildings in the middle of Roxbury. And I think it, I think it can work. And it, there's a lot of discussion about this among the attorneys that I sit on the Planning and Zoning Executive Board for the Connecticut Bar Association. I sit on the Connecticut Association of Municipal Attorneys. There's a lot of discussion among a lot of other towns about how this plays out.
Is it all pro some con or?
You know, the more urban, the.
Right.
The more urban, the people that have a more urban, come from urban towns, urban communities. They're dealing, they're dealing with different factors than, 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 than you are. And I think there was, there was some breaks, a little bit put on this year after last year. To say, let's stop for a minute and think this out. Because for me, the character matters of, and we can define character for Roxbury and you did.
Yeah.
Define what character means. Character matters for the communities. The whole personality of the state is made up of the character of each one of these little towns. If they become generic, all the same and generic, that would be a very sad. And I think a lot of people do recognize that.
If, if Hartford is still kicking this can, at the same time, they're telling us, oh, you got to do something right away.
Well, this Hartford is, you have representatives that also are up there. I mean, it's, but, you know. It's what they voted for. You know, when I started this conversation, yeah.
Some of it.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the whole big picture.
But you can, I mean, you can.
There's some things in there I agree with and will work for Roxbury. I think we could go forward.
You're going to have to find it. Yeah, but you, you'll find a path, you'll find a way to do that. And you don't have to do, the provide fours, I think, are, you know, the provide for sedimentation control, that's not a problem. That's a provide for. Okay, to provide for development of housing opportunities. What you do have in your regulations provisions, there haven't, there hasn't been a lot of interest. But the reason you don't have a lot of eight dash thirty G applications coming in for affordable housing is because it, of what I'm talking about, about terrain. It just is very difficult to do it in the environment, the habitat that's here. So you're going to be, it still has to work in this community. It has to be functional. It has to do that. I think to, so that was one of the provides, to promote, promote housing choice and diversity of housing. You have two, over two hundred people in your community that could use moderate, moderate, some kind of moderate income housing. You have things that you might decide to do. You might look at your zones and decide, maybe in this zone, we could provide some more opportunities. You've all talked about these. And I don't think they're different, that conversation, I don't think it's different than what is set out in this reg, regulation.
That's what I felt when I read it.
Now, the parts that shall, mandated, but they say shall. We, we abide by that and we end up going to public hearing. And the public comes out and just enforce, no way are you going to do that in Roxbury. Well, we have to. It says shall. Where do we make the decision when the public hearing is totally against it, but yet we're mandated to do it?
Well, you're mandated to do it. I mean, we are, you're, 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 the, the Enabling Act does tell us what our regulations have to include. We don't, we didn't write a section that says our regulations have to include theirs and here's the sections that we need to include. We just included them. I mean, that's what we did. And, but they, but they do carry out those words. They do say the words to provide for. Those words are there. If you did, if you took this out completely and didn't provide for the, you know, let's say we didn't have anything in about providing for proper sedimentation control. But I, but at, at section six and seven, under your special permit, your standards, we had a whole section on sedimentation control. We would have carried out the statute and provided it for. But what this does is it does give you and the public a checklist of what you can do. Instead of having to go to the statute each time and try to figure it out. And actually, when the statute says you're going to provide for, you're going to regulate, you're going to do these things. It, it, it makes a lot of sense that we have a checklist and we can go through the regs and you can decide. Jim, I think it's a good point. You can, you, you can decide how in Roxbury do I carry that out? What, what works in this community?
So if we can't provide for, we don't have to abide by the regulation. By regulation. That provide for is a statement that that's our.
Well, you know, some of the sections are, that it's, it's, for instance, to provide the development of housing opportunities, including opportunities for multifamily dwellings, consistent with cell types, terrain and infrastructure capacity for all residents of the municipality. So every town now has an affordable housing plan or they're supposed to by last, last June. I think yours was August. And, and that tells us what the needs are of this community. So if you decide that in order to do this, you want to put together a housing trust and figure out a way to get ten more, twelve more, however many units, how will they fit in? Where will they be? You have, you have a lot of discretion on how you carry these things out.
Hardest part about all that is finding something to actually build them without losing their shirt.
It, it absolutely is true. So I've had an experience representing a very wonderful developer that wants to put in some one and two bedroom rental housing so that it can be for young people, for workforce, to get that part of the population. People that are young and will go out to a restaurant at night and they'll do, do those things. And so the, the question was, if he came in, if he doesn't do an eight dash thirty G, if he doesn't eight dash thirty G and he's got thirty percent of the, of the units are affordable at, at, you know, medium low and low in, income. The quality of what he builds can't be the same.
Right.
If he could provide a twenty percent affordable, he can make it work. If he, if he, but if, if he can't get an approval for the twenty percent affordable, then his only choice would be to come in with an eight dash thirty G. And it affects, it, it's, you know, it, it affects the balconies, the bells and whistles, the things on the side, the, the quality. Yeah, other, I am clarifying, I'm talking about other, no, it's not this town, but it's a very good example of how to sharpen your pencil and try.
First, they got to buy the property and Roxbury's property is the most expensive in the state.
So now some, so some towns have done density bonuses. So if you come in and you'll, for forty years, restrict your housing to the affordable income requirements. Instead of being X number of units per acre, you could do maybe a few more and do that. So there are incentives that could start to be, to, to be in numbers, you know, not looking like an urban environment, but in numbers that would work like Roxbury, that would work in Roxbury. So you have some, you, you have, there are some choices on how to make this work.
So also talking about, you know, creating area, like groupings of towns. I forget what it's called.
So a regionalization.
Yeah, so that it's not just per town having a certain percentage.
Yeah, the whole area.
That is an area that is, that makes more sense. So then you can include larger.
That's right. They have planning areas.
Yeah, but that, that's coming down.
So the percentages is not.
Part of a region.
It's part of a region. There's a word for it. I'm, I'm forgetting it right now.
So, I mean, Roxbury is mainly single family. You also have agriculture, historic factors, conservation areas. All of those areas are, all of those are important parts even of the state housing plan. So the state housing plan includes, includes those factors as well. So the positives for your community can be, you shouldn't have to give up the positives for the community. And people, I think originally think, well, who is this going to be? And, you know, you learn after a few minutes that the people that qualify might be teachers, they might be nurses. They might be people that are really active, that are great to, to have in your community and support in your community. So I'd always remember, I remember Barbara Henry was very concerned about that the population just gets older and there's less and less children, there's less and less vibrancy in the community. So this commission.
It's true.
This commission gets to, you're going to get to work with this.
There's a lot of things that young people are looking for that we don't have in Roxbury and never will.
This is true.
There's not a Dunkin' Donuts on every corner.
Yeah.
There's, they want to be closer to the mall. They want to be closer to the theaters, the action. And to have a young couple, I mean, my own daughter lives outside of Boston. She couldn't think of coming back to Roxbury.
I, I know.
But then we do have young families who have moved in with kids because they don't want them near those things.
The school system helps a lot. It's very good. But anyway, yeah.
It is. So I don't, I don't see, I, 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 I agree with what you're saying to some extent. But I, I think creatively, you can, you can make this, you can make this work for your, for your town.
I mean, multifamily housing duplexes, I mean, that's not a problem.
Well, we can make it work for our town, provided, we're just afraid that if we vote for this, the door is slammed shut.
No.
But if we can provide for things, that gives us our outs.
That's right.
Well, and the, you know, the housing plan that we did, the purple housing plan addresses and talks about a lot of the items that are on this purpose.
They're, they're very tied in. Yes, they're very well tied in.
Tied in before we got it.
They're very well tied in and actually.
Knew that these things were coming up.
Regionalized zoning.
They, oops, they really, they, they really do. And I guess, and I, I have to tell you, Jim, I have the same concern about regionalization. Because of what I'm saying is, you know, we love living in the state because it's not generic. Every, every town has its own personality and identity. And so the trick is, how do you keep it and still provide some more opportunity? I'm sure there are people in Roxbury that would like to downsize and, and stay here in the community where they've lived all their lives.
Very large number.
So that, I mean, that is, there's no question about that. It's almost everybody that I know, as they get to the point of downsizing, would love to stay in the town where they've lived all their lives.
We've already discussed smaller lot sizes. In certain zones, going from three, which is a big piece of property, down to, like Bill says, even one. It's got to be a little more affordable. One acre, a small house, limit the size of the house that goes on that acre, not a mansion. Two thousand square feet, one acre lot. And make, we have interior lots, ridiculous, six acres. I mean, nobody can afford to buy an interior lot.
Yeah, so that can be, those are.
Make the interior same as the front lot.
So those are precisely in line with this. So I, I think it's just, you, you have a menu of things you can choose and the things you choose need to be the ones that work for your community. And, and I think, I think you can do it.
Okay. I, I have this problem right now, listening to Jim, listening to Gil. And it's like, I, I get this feeling of paralysis by analysis. There's a lot of stuff, we could go over this and sit at this table for the next week.
Because it's complex, it's multi-layered, you know, and I think we're afraid of jumping off the cliff a little bit.
Yeah, but providing for and if we analyze these things.
The provide fours, if you look at this, the provide fours agriculture, that's completely consistent. Providing for soil erosion, that's completely consistent with Roxbury. So when I, when I went through what the changes were, they, to me, they aren't huge changes. They're reworded, they're a little bit, they're certainly a little bit stronger to say promote or provide for those. You know, the legislature changed those words. So I, I think, I think you're going to, you're going to sort it through.
Yeah. Yeah, one, three, eighteen, provide for development of housing opportunities. I mean, that, I mean, we already have regulations for affordable housing, cluster, I mean, all of that.
I don't think, yeah, you don't have incentive, you don't have any incentive housing, which is something you might look at.
Right.
So inclusionary housing, incentive housing, there are separate sections in the statutes about those things. And the reason those sections are in the statutes, they're not in eight dash two. The reason those sections are in the statutes is when a community wants to do it, to make sure that the legislature is saying, yes, you can. That's what that does. There are floating zones and those kind of things. But, yeah, all of it, and the energy efficient patterns.
Yeah.
We always had solar, was in there before, you know. Subdivisions are supposed to show, they're always supposed to show where the solar, you know, how they might do solar. It doesn't mean that you can't get a subdivision approval if you don't do solar, but you're supposed to try to provide a plan that, that does some of that. That's been around, it's been around for twenty years. So I didn't think of, they were earth shaking. They're certainly moving in the direction of saying, try to do more in your asking communities, try to do more in your community to provide a, a different kinds of housing choices. I have nothing else.
So it's, you know. This isn't going to be difficult.
I mean, it's not going to make like, no.
Because we can have a rig to, for all that, whether it's used or not.
I mean, we have rigs that aren't being used. That's the point. For the nineteen nineties, the affordable housing rig's been in there since the nineteen ninety. No one's used it. So it's.
I think, I think it might have gone in when they put the word promote in.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's.
And conservation subdivisions have been used twice. The very first one and the last one. The first one was Jonathan Drive. That's why they made that conservation subdivision. And upon Jonathan Drive off of Davenport. And then we did Bronson Mount. And that was it.
So Jonathan or private road?
No.
But Bronson Mount is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jonathan cul-de-sac.
That's okay.
So you're going to, you're going to publish, so we'll, we'll publish the notice of this. The final ones with a couple of changes that you made, we'll go to the town clerk. And, you know, and it'll get posted, so on.
Okay.
We'll, we'll talk about it, but I just want to make sure that it all gets done.
Okay. Something other than the of.
This is not your rigs, you know, this is your rigs. That's my chi chi.
If we're ready.
So we make the motion a second, then talk about why. No, no. Right, the motion should include. Well, I, not consistent with state. Enabling act, right? Right, and consistent with the. Text amendments, right here.
We're ready, if we're ready to do this, then it's inappropriate, if it's appropriate for the town. Those two things exist. I think we can vote on it. So those basics, I mean, that, we've certainly. With all the discussion over the last year, we're, we're ready for it. We're ready to make a vote. And certainly, we've been beating this thing, is it appropriate for the town? And certainly we've been beating this thing, is it appropriate for the town? Well, maybe it's not totally appropriate, but we have lots of light up.
Give it a try.
Yeah.
Try real hard.
I think it's appropriate. I mean, I don't, I wouldn't go into this. With with doubts, I mean, having read it many times and, you know, having chaired the. Housing Plan Steering Committee too, but the things that we discussed there, knowing that that's part of the O C D. And that those are advisory documents. I I really see and then understand what provide, protect, facilitate, those are just. You know, opportunities for us to create regulations that are going to be suitable. And benefit Roxbury and knowing that there is latitude here. So if if I felt that there was something that shouldn't be in here, I'd be not for this. I personally am for each one of these items and I understand what they are.
Well, the only thing.
And the only thing, right, that we're only wedded to for the provides, everything else has. Space, correct? Yeah, I mean, like. Facilitate, protect, I mean, no, to protect, that's a that's a.
No, there's some other, there's some other parts of it that don't say provide that are mandatory provisions.
Right.
Okay. And I can, I will. See if I can, I'll tell you precisely what they are.
Yeah, maybe we can just identify exactly which one.
Let me go through, we'll do, we'll do it. Here we go. So here's the statute. Okay. And it first talks about some things you're authorized to do. You're authorized to do high number of stories and size of buildings. And you have you have a regulation that does that.
Right.
Okay, it used to be more limited and this is actually broader. It you can you can regulate the percentage of the area of a lot. And we we made sure that was clear that you can do that and you do that right now. The density of population and the location and use of building constructs and land for trade, industry, residents and other purposes. Then we took out the water dependent use because it doesn't happen for coastal, but those things are things that you do. The height, size, location, brightness, illumination, advertising signs and billboards, you do have sign regs. In your in your town. And so these are just authority to do things. They're not saying you shall do it. You have authority to do those things. That's the first part. Then such zoning commission may divide the municipality into districts. You do that. And the number and shape and the areas best suited to carry out your purposes. So there's some of the flexibility that we've talked about. The regulations may may provide that certain classes or kinds of buildings or structures or uses of land are permitted only after getting a special permit. We do that. You started doing much more flexibility on the on historic houses. Sometimes that is increasing the size of that building close to a neighbor or closer to a neighbor. You come in to make sure that it's it's reviewed. That's a good example of of that process. The distillery, all the all of the commercial zones, those are special permits where you're looking at parking, you're looking at uses, you're looking at the buildings that are there. This is all what you do. Then it says, the zoning regulations adopted shall, here's the shalls. Be made in accordance with the comprehensive plan and consideration of the plan of conservation and development adopted under eight dash twenty-three. You recite at the very beginning here that you're doing that. And you do, you are doing that. You have considered the plan of conservation development. But so almost automatically, you've done that by what Kim was saying is that you have this affordable housing plan, these provisions carry that out. They should be designed to lessen congestion in the street. You have that. To secure safety from fire, panic, flood and dangers, promote health and general welfare. You have that. These are still, these are still shalls. Provide adequate lighting and air. Protect the state's historic tribal, cultural, environmental resource that is new and it's a provide, you you have it. And it's completely consistent with Roxbury. Facility the adequate provision for transportation, water, sewage, sewage, schools, parks and other public requirements. You do have. You do have parks, you do have municipal uses, you do have those things. Consider the impact of permitted land uses on contiguous municipalities, what you're talking about. And on the planning region as defined in section four point one two four I. Well, that section is just the planning region. That's set up by the state statutory scheme. You send your regulations every time you pass zoning regulation out to cog. They're regional, they come back and say there's no impact. So are are, yes, you have to do it, you have been doing it, that part of it is not changed. The next one. To address significant disparities in housing needs and access to educational occupation and other opportunities, that's new language. It's in your regs, however, it's the same kind of housing needs and different kinds of housing that is in here. Maybe two or three times in the in the in this section, there's definitely an emphasis on it under the new state statute. Promote efficient review of proposals and applications. We talked about that, we have that right at the end of your years. Affirmatively further the purposes of the Federal Fair Housing Act, which means that we don't have discriminatory housing. The kind of thing that you were talking about, Jim, where you could, you know, once you get this done and start actually looking at the regs. You might look at the sizes of some of those lots and all those kinds of things. Those are positive for the Fair Housing Act. So these are still provide for. Be drafted with reasonable consideration to the physical site characteristics of the district and peculiar stability suitability for particular uses and a view to encouraging most appropriate use of land. You have that precise, it's it's a provide for, it's a it's a requirement. Provide for the development of how again, housing opportunities, including opportunities for multifamily dwellings. Multifamily dwellings are considered naturally affordable. And they're different than affordable housing. Affordable housing is, you know, it's got restrictions and it's either set aside or it's chappa and it's a program like. You know, yeah, the multifamily is considered more affordable because they're smaller units, it's easier, cheaper to build, all those kinds of things. So so the the regs require us to try to provide some way to do that multifamily. If you get four units, you've got a multifamily. If you've got a four unit, you know.
Right.
Structure.
Five units.
Does that qualify that for the ten percent of all housing units?
No, they don't. They just, but thi- this is two different requirements. One of them is, one of them is that you'll you'll provide some more naturally affordable.
Unless they're built and and that's.
They can be, they could be restricted. They can be.
They don't have to be.
Right, right.
And you know what a lot of towns have done? You know, Middlebury does this, a bunch of different towns do it. When somebody comes in and they want to do X amount in some density, the town says. You got to do at least ten percent, have to be affordable.
Yeah.
Every time you bring an application in, start getting a couple of them done. When somebody comes in, it's not just a single family house, it's not an apartment, they're coming in and they're going to provide something with more units. Then give it to us. Now, your regulations right now have a provision to do that, very specific provision to do that. So it's something you're gonna you're gonna look at. But it is, it is a requirement. Let's see, I'm still on the shalls. Oh, wow. So when 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 they wanted to say you don't have to do this, the answer is, yes, you do. So be made with reasonable consideration for the impact of the regulation on agriculture, that's a shall. Provide that the proper provision be made for soil erosion, that's a shall. Be made with reasonable consideration, protection of existing potential public surface and ground drinking water supplies. You have that, that's a, that's, you know, that's wells. That's that's a shall. In any municipality that is contiguous to a navigable waterway, draining long on the sound, we didn't have to do that. Okay, now I have the mays. Okay, so the next group are mays. To the extent consistent with soil types, terrain, water, sewer and traffic infrastructure capacity for the community, pride for cluster development. We have that, we do, we already have that and we kept it in. It's a may, we didn't have to provide for cluster development in in our town. We have always had it, it didn't go away, we left it in. Or you left it in. Be made with reasonable consideration for historic factors. That's a may that you would never want to take out.
No, that's important for our town. That's exactly right.
So these are the may things. Require promote in energy efficient patterns of development, use distributed generation, those kind of things with the new kinds of energy. We put it in, it was a may. You could have left it out, you could have left it out. I'm not sure why you would, because it is where the world's moving. Provide for municipal system for creation of development rights and permanent transfer of such development rights, which may include a system. For variance of density limits in connection with any such transfer. That would be incentive kind of zoning where you'd say, if you transfer your development rights and stop, say, I won't develop anymore, we'll let you over here. Somewhere else, give you more density than we allow. It's something you could do, it's something that you could, you could still do it, even if you don't have it in your regs. Because it's allowed, but you don't have any, that's not been something that's been on the top of the agenda, I don't think, in Roxbury. Provide for notice requirements in addition to those required by chapter. You do this. Everywhere, every time, everywhere in your regs, you provide for personal notice. That's in addition to what the statute requires. And the statute says, if you do it, you have to do it a certain way. Seven days, you know, you have to use the assess the assessors. Card numbers for knowing who those people are. Some some towns do it, some towns don't do it. We don't need to write it into our rig, we didn't need, we don't need to write that in here, we just, you do provide for it in your eggs. Provide for conditions on operations to collect spring water and well water. I don't know where that came from, it's got to have some specific town, must have gotten that put in there somehow. Provide for floating zones, overlay zones and planned development districts. Your your both your your senior housing and your and your affordable housing provisions. Are like an overlay zone there, you can land those on a certain piece of property that have a certain acreage and land them down and and qualify. You don't need to say it in your reg to get it. Require estimates of vehicle miles traveled and vehicle trips generated in lieu of, in addition to level of service traffic calculations. To assess the anticipated traffic impact and proposed developments. We didn't, we didn't put it in. I mean, we we have special permit requirements where somebody has to look at the traffic flow.
Right.
We didn't need this. In any municipality where there's trap rock ridge or ampibolite ridge is located, provide for development restrictions and ridge. Line setback areas restrict coring, clear cutting, except the following. I think you probably know that those bridges are mapped, the trap rock places in Connecticut are mapped. And if you have one in your community, you can do this. If you don't have it, you don't do this. Let's see. You could provide for selective timbering, grazing, domesticated animals and passive recreation. You have a you have a broad provision on agriculture, so you didn't need that. Then we get to the shall nots. So that was the maze.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to get to the shall nots. The things you cannot do is you can't prohibit the operation of a family childcare home. Or group childcare home in a residential zone. We don't have to put the shall nots in the regs.
Right.
We just can't do it. We couldn't provide something that had the wrong thing. Unreasonably restrict access to the size of receptacles for business, given the nature of the businesses, we're talking about disposal receptacles. You couldn't say, you can have a restaurant, but you can only have a little tiny, tiny, you know, tiny disposal. Impose conditions and requirements on manufactured homes. So there was a stigma that some towns said, you know, manufactured homes are different, so they're protected. Prohibit the continuous of a non-conforming use, we've already take, we have regulations that already do that, carry that out. We shall not require a special permit or special exception for such continuation. We don't. If you, it's a vested right, if you have a non-conforming use or not legally existing, non-conforming use. Or a legally existing non-conforming building, it's vested and protected by the state, the state statute and our regulations. You can do what you're doing, which you can allow more flexibility. You just can't not allow them to continue.
So we were ahead of.
No, and you're ahead on the apartments that you're doing, you you were way ahead. You can't prohibit a residential zone of any cottage food operation, which is a a new definition. You can't have a minimum floor area for a dwelling unit greater than the building code. So whatever that is, place numerical cap on the number of units. Your neighboring town of Southbury had a provision that said you could not have more than two hundred and thirty-four units in an X ten year period. Because because they were trying to push down the heritage village part of that community. You could not do that now. You don't do it, so it's not a problem. And then it goes to the number of parking spaces for for accessory units, you already took care of that.
We opted out.
So these things, and and then the last thing was that. You can't have any advertising sign or billboard that's not equipped with the ability to calibrate the brightness that exists before the regulation. It gets to stay. So this doesn't, it really has no importance. So when when I wanted, when when most of what we've put in here are the things that are required. And we've opted in to the things that make sense for your town.
Or that we're already doing it.
Yeah, you're already.
That's what it sounds like. So it's just comprehensively, yeah.
So does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate everyone's patience on that.
Yeah, no, no.
I really, I like the itemization.
I agree, totally agree that it's as recorded, it's in the record and.
Yeah, I appreciate it, thank you.
People who couldn't be here this evening or haven't been to the meetings over the last year.
Right, they can watch the.
And it pulls the scariness out, you know, because it's really.
Right. Well, it's been called scary, but I'm not sure it's very scary.
It's not scary. That's what I'm saying, but it it has been characterized at times.
So that was very helpful.
I think we're.
I think we're ready to make a motion.
Ready, ready, rock and roll.
So we're going to make a motion with the two changes.
Well, you know.
Yeah, yeah, with thirteen, nine and thirteen.
I can't remember any different.
So thirteen, nine, take that, including water dependent.
I've internalized it all and I'm.
Yeah, it's right there.
So you're gonna need a motion with some reasons.
One spoiler.
We have it all set.
You're making.
Right, it's in thirteen point one, right.
And then the other one is fourteen.
Is fourteen with the of.
Use of.
With the use of.
One, three, fourteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You read this before.
The use of.
So just two of those.
But she, this is a motion.
That's in the first sentence. Okay. Yep, yep.
It's in the first sentence.
So does the motion include the reasons?
You need to include reasons.
You have the whole thing.
I have the whole.
She's got, she's all set.
Should I stand up?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll see if everybody else. All right, let's see. All right, here goes. All right. Candy Valery, I make a motion to approve text amendments to the Roxbury zoning regulations, section one point three, purpose. With the changes to section one point three point nine, which moves, does not apply to us because it's water sound.
That's just a section of it, not the whole thing.
Oh, right, just the including water dependent because it.
Okay, water dependent.
And we're not.
Read that, read that part that's going to be taken.
Okay. I needed that. Okay, let me, okay, with the changes to section one point three point nine.
Removing.
Removing, including water dependent uses as defined in CGS, section twenty-two A dash ninety-three. And section one point three point one four, where we add of OF. After the, it's the use of, it will now read, promote energy efficient patterns of development, comma. The use of distributed generation or freestanding of solar, comma, wind, comma, and other renewable forms of energy, comma. And energy conservation. The reasons for the approval are as follows. One, to be in compliance with the plan of conservation and development. Two, the state enabling act. And also, we took into consideration the fact that the section remains consistent with what we want. As the Roxbury character, as far as its character, not making any changes in that.
That work? How about that last one?
Well, we're not supposed to. Well, we're not supposed to use the word character, yeah. Roxbury remain as close to the Roxbury we.
The vision.
We know the vision we have.
The vision we have for Roxbury, maybe?
But we did define character.
Yeah, I think it's that vision and that vision is in the plan of conservation.
Right, okay, all right, so, yeah, all right, so instead of character, it'd be the vision we have for Roxbury.
Like this, it's implied in that first piece, so we don't even need to say it, I guess.
Right, that's the point.
Right, it's applied, so, yeah. Right, it's applied, so, yeah.
I'm done.
So that needs to be seconded.
I second it.
Do you want to read it once more?
Candy, could I get a copy of that?
I think you should.
I'll take a copy. I'm not going to get all that, so.
She should read it again.
Yes, I do.
Do I read it again? Okay.
So then I would say, I have to read.
Forget this, the last part.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, here goes. All right, I make the motion to approve text amendments to the Roxbury zoning regulations. Section one point three, purpose, with the changes to section one point three nine. Which deletes including water dependent uses as defined in CGS section twenty-two A dash ninety-three. And section one point three point one four, whereby we add of between the use of distributed. That will now read to promote energy efficient patterns of development, comma, the use of distributed generation or freestanding of solar, comma, wind. And other renewable forms of energy and energy conservation. The reasons for the approval are. Uh, this will make it, will be in compliance with the plan of conservation development and the state enabling act.
The zoning.
The zoning enabling act, yes.
That's a motion.
Oh, I second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 opposed? Motion's approved.
Good job, commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was really, I know I asked a lot.
So I appreciate you placating me.
Now, thank you.
Sometimes it's a good thing.
Yeah, thank you for the.
You're welcome.
Detailed.
No, I think it, I think it was good to get it all out on the record. Yeah, I think it's good for your town to do that. So it makes sense. So now the work starts, the real work starts. We know the purposes, we just have to figure out the rest.
All right.
Gail, are you going to stay for the rest of the meeting?
I, I don't need to unless there's anything that you have on the agenda that you want me to be involved in.
I was just going to ask you a question. See, now you're here. It's your, you made mention of the subcommittee for this.
Yeah, do you want to move, you want to move that matter up and?
It's next anyway.
Okay.
I just had a couple of questions on subcommittee, because all my years of zoning, we never formed a subcommittee.
Well, we did that.
For this.
Yeah.
But in my 25 years, we've never done it.
Yeah, I thought the reason was because the, the historic district commission wanted to meet.
Amend.
And do a work set, some kind of a work session.
They first came to us to amend it.
Right, that I, and, okay.
And I tried to explain to them that they had to write their amendments.
Yeah.
We accept it word for word, don't change a thing, and go right to public hearing. And all I got is, no, no, we don't want to do that. We don't want to do that. And now we're having a subcommittee.
Well, I will say this. I don't think the zoning commission. I mean, the, the historic district commission has the knowledge of your regulations that they have some, they may have ideas that are good ideas, but I'm not sure. Uh, they could say, Gail McTaggart, would you draft something? Uh, and do this. What I said I would be willing to do, but it's only if anybody wants me to. That I'd be willing to meet with a couple of members of the zoning commission, a couple of members of the historic, so we're in a workshop type environment. And look at what everybody's talking about. I didn't even know, I, you know, I, I'm not sure what all their goals are. And they don't have a good sense, I don't think, probably of all of how your zoning regulations work. That last, that last revision that you did where we've further expanded.
Other twenty-five percent?
Yeah, twenty-five percent, the barn, what you've done with barns, how you define historic houses. Um, I know their worry, uh, because I've met with them on demolition permits, because there's an, we have a demolition delay ordinance in Roxbury and I really do want that to be revised to, to provide a longer period of time.
If that's on our, for our.
Yeah, so it, there's a, the statutes are allowing more time and we need to, to do that.
There's one thing I want to throw out too, make the historic commission and these subcommittee members. Is the word intent, what was our intent of the regulation?
What do you mean?
Well, you've mentioned it to me many times, that the intent is very important.
Well, the intent is important if you're in a situation where you read the words and can't figure out what they mean.
This is pretty simple. Twenty-five percent of the footprint. And it's simple what they want. They wanted more.
Okay, so.
But our intent was twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
For a reason.
Yeah.
For a reason.
Yeah.
It didn't alter the neighborhood by a great deal. And if you get bigger than that, and these are non-conforming houses, they're very close to each other. I didn't think it was fair to the neighbors.
But you, if you.
But that was.
If this commission doesn't have any interest in, you feel like you've gone as far as you want to go and you don't have any interest right now in doing that. I just think when you have a, like a sister commission or agency that's coming and saying we'd like to do this, even if the conversation is let's, we want to tell you why we think we don't need to do more. I mean, even if you sat down in that workshop and talked about it.
We have, I mean, within our meetings.
Yeah, but I think, you know.
But subcommittees, to me, we're, the zoning commission. We're very capable of doing our job without some, it's.
You could, but drafting something with five or six members is never been easy.
Well, I, I can say that just for the non-conformity, I mean, wasn't just. You know, I worked on that mostly and I worked it with you.
Right.
And then we sat down, talked about, about it, but it was, um, you know, even when Stuart was doing separate things with the regulations, he, in essence, was a subcommittee. You know, and.
He was a member of the zoning.
No, I understand, but you know, he was still doing things separate from.
Outside of the meeting.
Outside of the meeting.
But I'm talking about bringing in people that aren't members of the zoning.
But they're not doing anything that's, um, what I want to say, they're not making decisions at all.
No, but they're end result, their end result, it's what.
Well, the end result may be nothing.
Right.
I think the end result may be.
I just didn't think it was, the committee was necessary.
Oh, well, it may not be.
Well, if we give them, if we give them the order to, you will do it or you'll do, if you give us something, we have to accept and turn down.
That's the way it's always been.
Right, but I think I, I, I don't. If they, because they're not zoning, if they were to draft something. It's like, it's probably not going to even go close to having us pass it.
No, because it's not going to be written in the language. We need it written on.
So.
Well, they simply wanted the number to change.
No, I think it was, I think it was.
I thought there was more than that.
More than that.
Well, I didn't hear it the night that she was given.
Yeah, it was in the drawing.
How ridiculous our regulation was.
I don't know if I have. But it's up, but it's up, it's up to your commission about whether you want to do it or not.
I think it's okay to have them do it and.
Have a conversation.
Bring us their proposal.
Yeah.
And if it's, at least it might be written legally. And if, if it's written in plain language and zoning language, not historic commission language. So we can relate to it better.
Well, it's just, it's, you know, people buy a non-conforming home, which is generally small. They know at the time of purchase, they can only make it bigger by twenty-five percent. They know all that. But they go forward, they buy the home because it's pretty reasonable price because it's so small. The next thing, oh, I need four more bedrooms. I need four more bedrooms. We shouldn't have bought a two-bedroom house.
I don't think I have.
Thank you for going.
I don't think I have their letter. Yeah, but I don't, I, I'm not, you know, I'm flexible on this.
I don't think we should stick to the way we've always done it if the historic commission wants to amend a reg. And this, what you're.
They're going to call me up and say, can you help me draft a reg? And I'm, I'm going to say.
I mean, we did it.
I can't, I represent the zoning commission, I represent your commission. I don't have a conflict if everybody's saying, okay, we just want to talk about it. And, and it may be that talking about it explains to them why you don't need to do something more, or that you still, this is a pretty new, you have one of the most flexible, I've told them. You have, Roxbury has one of the most flexible amendments to save historic houses. People are, I've gotten calls, people are copying it. Yeah, so I mean, I know that it, um, you, you really paid attention to what your community needed and gave more flexibility, which you can do.
All right, it's getting late.
Okay. I didn't answer it, but. But if you want me to meet with, what I said is if you want me to meet with, with, with some representatives of you, whoever they might be, and Jim, you could come.
We've already chosen.
There's already volunteers, yeah.
And then, and if they have a couple of members, rather than having to have a, a public session kind of thing, and we could do it, whatever schedule anybody wants, I'm willing to do that. A lot of it depends on what you end up, this group ends up saying you want to do. I mean, you're, you're the zoners, not the historic district commission.
Yep.
We're just off of those.
Yeah.
See what the law puts.
Right.
Some criteria.
Yeah, I think conversation's good. I, I'm fine with having.
Yeah, closing down conversation.
Talk it out so that they can learn more, you know, and it's a, it's a.
There might be a good.
A little less.
It might turn out there's a good idea. It could be that there's something else that could work that doesn't.
I know where they're coming from.
You do.
But again, I think what Gail said too is right, that they may come to that. And then they go, oh, we really can't, you know, but they just need some time to talk it out. No.
And you know, if you just talk about perception, I think it's just not a good one if we don't.
Well, it's one of those.
They had a couple of disappointments, I think, on some, on houses that they've lost. And I think they've lost them because the people couldn't do enough with them.
Right.
And part of what, I, I agree with a lot of what you're saying, Jim, that, you know, you, you've gone overboard to try to make this work in, in this community and they're maybe asking for a lot more, I don't know.
Yeah.
So I can go pick center?
Wow, late.
I hope it's waiting for you when you get there. It's like my house.
I've got a dishwasher there.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad to have this down.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we continue the next one?
Yeah, I just want to say, we were talking about, so it's fun to, you know, I always use that little house that you moved into. Let's say that's.
Are we talking, yeah.
We're talking about.
Oh.
How, uh, historic.
Historic, okay.
And it is. We work on a table this because Chris wasn't here and, but we're talking about.
The two of them are right, the two people who are subcommittee on here.
Committee.
Yeah.
It's on our agenda, we could discuss.
Right, of course, yeah.
So. What I heard was if, if you want to put a twenty-five percent addition on that house. Very much. Are they worth it? If you have a four thousand.
It's bigger.
It's a bigger thing, but a huge.
But that particular house does not have a bathroom on the first floor. And if an elderly couple wanted to downsize, they wouldn't go there because the only bathroom's upstairs. We used to live there. So twenty-five percent of that footprint would be adequate to put a bathroom downstairs. And that was the intent of the regulation. The sole intent of, my intent of the regulation was for a little bump out for a bathroom.
Yeah.
Or a possible bump out.
No, no provision for ratio.
No, just twenty-five percent of, that's a ratio, twenty-five percent.
Well, I mean, ratio would be, but it's twenty-four percent of.
The footprint.
Of the footprint of the existing house, but it's a huge house, the ratio changes.
You're saying there's no absolute on it?
Right.
Like you can only do a maximum of.
But that's fair.
That was fair. That was a good number. It's twenty-five percent of the house that they're discussing, to my knowledge, is quite a large house. For Roxbury. That's a big twenty-five. Twenty-five percent of that would be quite an addition. I think twenty-five percent, but anyway. They said, oh, that's just ridiculous. That's doing nothing to save historic homes. Well, it is saving the historic home because if you get bigger than that, the, the historic home is going to get involved in the addition and it's gone.
The intent of the home.
Yeah, anyway.
Right.
But don't you, I mean, it's, don't you think it's okay?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's important for people to have this discussion.
I don't know how we got through it.
Questions, you know, historic district commission, so I think it's important for, then those two will be great, you know, Elaine and Chris, just to help them talk it through. And I think that's important to do outside of this thing.
If we, if we put it just up to the historic commission, they'd be destined to fail.
Yes, they would. And I think that's unfair.
It wouldn't.
The same thing we did with the Coopers over here. Crossing Times Square.
Carter.
Carter's, Braden Carter's house.
They brought a regulation to change.
Right.
To us, and we, we denied it.
We denied it, yeah. It was poorly written too.
Yeah, we denied it, boom, shut it down.
Yes.
And then we went back to the drawing board and we made one that worked.
Right.
This could do the same thing.
But just get them working on it.
Let's see what, but our two members, as long as they take to the table.
Yeah.
The intent of the original regulation.
Yep.
And I don't think anybody.
You can certainly let them know that, I mean, that's.
The intent was to keep it minimal, so you don't lose your historic home. Anyway.
All right, up to that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Zebra, Chris, the zoning reg, Fent Candy. Uh, John's not here.
Right.
So.
We'll continue it.
All right, Kim Events Permit, John's not here.
Right.
So we'll continue that.
Yep.
Chairman's report, I, I, I always have a lot of things I want to say, but the only thing I want to say is I do, I do read these things that Karen puts here.
Oh, yeah, and newsletters.
Was there one I didn't even?
Yeah, there was at the very end.
There's, there's one.
It's our spring one.
Oh, yeah.
Short-term rentals. Something that we, we talk about, this, they're allowing very short-term rentals, but.
We're talking about that in, on Board Slick, so that's my, something that I keep.
So we wrote a bunch of stuff years ago. I don't know where it ended up.
Yeah, I'll look, I'll look that up too.
Karen's got it.
I probably still have it.
Yeah, there was like four pages of stuff. We got it all complete and we stuffed it away.
I thought we sent it to the Board of Selectmen.
It was ready to go. I was on the board then and we got something ready. And then it just shelved.
Yeah, I put it back on the, on the docket.
Yeah, we shelved.
There were some good ideas in that, I mean.
Yeah, so we can find.
Right now, short-term rentals can happen. If it's a residence or.
Not tomorrow.
A home, that's all it needs. Because of time. But the, uh, regulations, we can specifically, the zoning commission can specifically provide the period of short.
Well, the, the big deal here is that it's, because, uh, it rather. Yeah, can't talk anymore. That it's not go through zoning, that it'd be an ordinance, because if it's zoning and only goes from that date forward and doesn't take here or regulate anything that's existed.
Right.
And there's a bunch of.
So there's a whole lot.
What's the status of that now?
So it, an ordinance is retroactive.
Okay, but what's the status of an ordinance or?
Oh, well, we're still, I'm collecting data from the tax assessor. She's actually. We came up with a little survey for other towns.
Actively doing it right now.
Yeah, so we're actively working on that, just to get, we're gathering information. That's my big thing always.
Things are, things are rumbling in town, and things are changing.
Yeah.
There's an Airbnb, Route sixty-seven, Southbury Road, that had a front desk. And, yeah, this is Peter Philos when he was still with us.
Yeah.
And he knew of it. And you actually, through your phone, would contact the owner and you'd unlock the front door.
Oh, yeah.
With his phone.
Oh, wow.
A front desk.
Yeah, it had a front desk.
Oh.
Yeah. That was five years ago.
Yeah.
Still there?
I don't know.